And Committee Chair Hodges for not having, and probably Trent for not having any K use insignia stuff in behind him, so. That's a plus.
Now, I thought about doing a virtual background. But it probably would have been a chief's background, but, or actually, I was gonna do the city county building and I was gonna go take a picture of it yesterday. Download it to the computer and put it behind me, but forgot to do it.
Okay, it's 2:30, are we wait, uh, I think, are we still waiting on Debbie then, Mike?
I can see that she now has a picture, it looks like she's muted, and I will defer to Jacob in terms of unmuting her and possibly putting the presentation on the screen. Yes, I will throw it up here, um, Debbie, you should be good to go, can you hear, if you can talk?
I can't, yes, yes, I'm here.
There she is, okay, it's 2:30, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so Debbie, we're gonna turn it over to you or Mr. Scrag, whoever's gonna start off.
Yeah, I'll quickly turn it over to Debbie, she's prepared the PowerPoint presentation as relates to CIP and SubCIP. And bear with us technologically, whether we can get that on the screen, but you all should have received a paper copy of it. Yes.
So this afternoon, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this afternoon, what we're gonna look at is more of the detail of the CIP and the SubCIP. If you look through this, you know you've seen it all before, but what we really need to get into today is kind of the details, because once we get through this process, I will bring this back to City Commission for Action and Approval, and once we do that, then the department heads and people out in the world are going to start acting on this as soon as we say go. They're gonna start putting bids out, they're gonna start looking for projects and things like their projects and things like that. So this is our opportunity to really look at the details, because during the budget process, we really don't have time to look at the details. We kind of just do an overview of the amount that we're looking at that we're going to budget. So if you look at the, first of all, I think what we need to talk about is where all the money's coming from for these things. So Jacob, if you can pull up the first, the second, the second page where the sales tax capital fund is. That spreadsheet is something that we've seen before, um, okay, the next slide. I can see it, good, so what I did on this one was, I actually split it into two screens, because I know when we look at these numbers, they're so small and there's so much information that it's kind of hard to see all the numbers, but this is what we would have had in there prior during the budget process. The only thing that has changed in this is our forecast for revenues for 2020 and 2021 as far as sales taxes concerned. We are seeing numbers coming back up for sales tax, so we are anticipating those numbers to come back a little bit higher than we originally anticipated back in August or even in July. And then in 2021, we're anticipating that what we budgeted is that number will match what we actually did in 2019. And beyond that, the revenue forecast is a 0.5% growth. I will tell you today, in looking at the numbers that we received for November, which we've received the preliminary documentation, but not the detail or the actual payment, our numbers are still up a little bit over 1% over the year from last year, so that's encouraging. But I just wanted to reinforce that we've only forecasted a 0.5% increase in revenues in this fund. So if you look across this fund, what we've tried to do, and we've explained this before, is take everything that we're committed to, either via debt financing or some commitment, and we've tried to put those on the left-hand side and then put to the right-hand side those expenses that we have a little bit more opportunity to change those if we wanted to do that. So if you look at this, we've got the Lee Building on here still for 2020, we've got Kenwood Cove coming off in 2020, and then the Streetscape being added in 2020. We have some river renewal, those highlighted in blue are the items that we've already debt financed. Those highlighted in white are those that we would anticipate that we would be financing either in 2021 or in a future year as they're stated here on the form. On the next slide.
Debbie, before you move past this slide, you might touch on the highlighting in 2037, 38, and 39.
Oh, as we know, the sales tax, the special sales tax does sunset in 2036, so that red line kind of indicates that. And we've taken that into consideration, we have, we do have debt financing that is scheduled to go beyond that date. And so we've kept that in these original forecasted numbers, but as you'll see in a couple of slides, we've actually gotten information on that our finance, our financial advisor on what happens if we refinance those and got them within the payment structure of the 2036 sunset. So that's what those numbers beyond 2037 are kind of indicating in this, the bonds that we've already issued that we did, we have terms beyond the 2036 timeframe.
And I just have one, I had one quick question. In previous presentations, hadn't we included a small amount toward Kenwood Cove upkeep? Once it was, once our debt was paid off of that, or, and I want to say it was like $45,000 or $65,000 annually. It wasn't a big amount, but it was something that we had at least acknowledged that we would need to put back into the facility.
Yeah, it's actually on the next page, on the next slide.
Thank you. Oh, I got you, I got you.
The Kenwood Cove maintenance, that bracket column.
Gotcha, thank you.
We have left that in there as we had intended.
Okay.
The rest of these are numbers that we've put in there that we've left in there for the time period that we've actually indicated. So as you go to the right, you can see the total expenses, the total net income or loss, and then where we anticipate the fund balance to be based on these are these projections, and even through the 2037 or 39 payment, we still anticipate that this fund will be in a positive state with these, all of these assumptions. And they'll remember that probably six months ago, we looked at the schedule and it was not in a positive state, but I'll remind you that we did take the police training facility out of the sales tax and we put that into property tax, so that has significantly helped this fund look like it will maintain a positive fund balance through this, through these commitments. So the next slide is the same sales tax funding, the same project, the same expenditure, you wanna flip to the next one, Jacob? And, but this is where we've asked, if we do a refunding on those bonds that went beyond 2036, what would that do for our fund balance? So basically, we changed those payment amounts as if we have refinanced those, those, that, those bonds. And what you'll see at the end of that one is instead of like $202,000, because we'd now be about $500,000 worth of debt. Obviously, because there's a couple reasons, we're paying less years, so our interest is going down for that reason. Plus, if we refinance when we can, the interest rates are much lower now than they were when we actually financed this debt. So we just wanted to make sure we put this, these numbers out there too, so, because we were aware that those debt financing were going beyond 2036.
Debbie, if I might, when would we be looking at the refunding?
I believe the first one, I'm thinking off the top of my head, mine has been 20, let's see if I can tell by the numbers. I'll say 2028, but I don't remember for sure.
Looks like Streetscape changed 2037, yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was, wasn't very soon, so when that number flips from like 96 to 865 on.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's 2026.
Yeah, that's when our bonds become callable. And federal law does not allow us to redeem them early at this point, if that changed, we could change that, but at this point, we're not allowed to do that. And so we're not allowed to refinance until we're actually callable, actually callable. So the next slide, we need to just take a look at, and this is just all background information, because as we go through the discussion, we need to know where this money's coming from. So we've taken a look at the debt service fund, and this again, we've looked at several times, the ending of my balance was about $1 million at the end of 2019. With the 2020 numbers in there, it looks like it could be about $1.9 million. And part of that reasoning is because we had budgeted for the police training facility out of that 2020 budget, and that was, we budgeted a $365,000 payment that we didn't have to just make, because we didn't finance that, we haven't financed that in a bond yet. And so that payment didn't come out yet in 2020, that's part of the reasoning for that. The other thing I want to make sure we brought into this is what is gonna be coming on, because we can look at what's happening now, but we've got committed projects that we're already doing, so we need to keep those in mind. It's easy to remember, let's put that on the credit cards, then the credit card bill comes, you remember you have to pay for it. So these are all, the table on the left are projects that we've basically committed to that have, we have not done our bonding on. So these will have consequences to this debt service plan, or this debt service fund in later years. Then the table on the right kind of breaks out these projects that we're bringing forward to you today in the 2021 CIP, and kind of breaks out where those numbers are gonna be and where, how they're gonna affect that debt service fund for those payments.
Debbie, it looks like, out of the bond and interest fund, it looks like we're looking at about a $600,000 change starting in about 2022.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's good, I think part of the reason we've held the balance in that fund is so we could absorb that to some extent.
Yes, we did look at that last year, early on in the year to see where we were, and one of the reasons we looked, when we looked at that during the budget process, we knew that we were gonna have kind of a peak, but we also knew that we had a reserve that we could absorb that peak without raising that no levy in that debt service fund very much cover that. So we did, we did recognize that in there. I will say too, we have several large projects that, and this may only make sense to Rod, that have to be closed out out of debt servicing. So we have to kind of balance what their, their funding is, compare their expenditures, and get that all cleaned up and balanced out. So any pluses or minuses that come out of that process will actually go to the debt service fund. If there be finance to just property tax, so we have several of those big projects that still need to be balanced out.
This, this may be more of a question for Mr. Scrag than for you, Debbie, but on the river renewal construction, do we, do we really think we'll be bonding or doing anything in 2021 at this point?
Actually, we've budgeted for that, we, some of that depends on the core, but we're still proceeding on the premise that we could be. Debbie, you may actually have had a more recent conversation with Martha Tasker about that.
The numbers that, if you, you can't see it on the screen, but in that table where we show the construction, that $7 million, we show the first payment in 2023, which according to what, the last time I talked to Martha, if we started, tip, probably what would happen is if we're ready to do any construction at all in 2021, we'd do temporary notes, and we would do those until we could actually issue bonds in 2022. So that would be the earliest time that I could foresee that we would be doing, having a debt payment on that, because I don't see that, foresee that we have that process in place before we move to that point.
That, that was kind of my question, so, okay, thank you.
Yep. So then on the next, next page, we have the debt service fund, but then we have to really look at where does the money come from for those payments? Because there's a lot of sources of our debt being financed. We gotta flip to the next screen, Jacob. Not only is property tax part of the equation, we also have motor vehicle tax, transit guest tax. We do support several projects with sales tax, we have special assessments, we have utilities that have debt, and we have the solid waste fund that has debt at this time. So what we end up doing is, we take all of that debt that we have to pay, we break it out by who is responsible for the payment of that, and then really what is the current property tax number is, is a plug to make it all balance, because ultimately, if we're issuing yield bond debt, property tax is a tough gap on that, and it's gonna pay for anything that we can't pay for and come from some other source. So that's why you'll see in this, in this table, as, as our debt is issued and we pay those off every year, that, that requirement for property tax is gonna go down. But what we have to remember is every year we will probably issue new debt for those numbers. We hope we can kind of level them out, but we knew we were gonna have, we're gonna have a few years here in the next couple of years where that number kind of peaks. And then we have several projects that are starting to drop off and that, that requirement for property tax starts to really drop off. The other thing I'll note on here is the transit guest tax is for CPAT, it only goes through 2036 or '07, I think. Goes through 2037, so when that drops off, that, that debt should be dropped off also, so that shouldn't have an effect. But if these other numbers change with, you know, like transit guest tax, for example, this year, but we have been budgeting about $240,000, so we're not gonna get $240,000, and we probably won't get that in 2021, that's why we reduced that number to 120, because of what's going on with, with the transit guest tax number. So this one just basically shows you where all that money comes from, that we would anticipate the money comes from to pay for those, those, into those debt issuers. Any questions on any of that? And then the next slide is basically just a graphic of what I've shown you before. The first one up in the top left-hand corner kind of shows you graphically where we are today with no new debt, no new projects, not debt financing, any of the projects that we have in the hopper from this year, but that's kind of where those numbers lie out. And you can see there's some, there's kind of a drop, and then it kind of goes up for 2021, 2022, 2023, and then it's 25 starts to go back down. But when you put the current, the future debt in there, that number goes up a little bit higher, but it does start to come back down in 2024, 2025 also. So it doesn't surprise me that that still is, is to take. The top right-hand graph is where our net debt service no levy has been over those course of years, it's gone up and down significantly as we needed that money for whatever reason, year by year, we can look at that and see what our requirement is based on that previous slide. The bottom right-hand table is again, just a repetition of where the, the new projects will go in, just so you can see, I added that just so you can see why those, those graphs look a little bit different from the current debt on the top to the current debt, to the payment which is due to debt on the bottom, and kind of what those projects are the, obviously including in there, so that kind of gives you a graphic on that. So that gets us through the funding and where money comes from and kind of where that, those situations stand at the time. So now what we'll get into on the next slide, Jacob, is the SubCIP. And as you know, we have kind of two categories, we have the CIP, which is our five-year program for large yearly construction projects. And then we have our SubCIP, which is typically smaller funding requirements, so over $20,000 typically. Most of them, all of them are being paid out of cash, so this kind of gives you the picture of what those are, and kind of how we want to, where our priorities are as far as spending the money that we have allocated to that. But just for an overview, the CIP planning, we really kind of set that aside for studying, planning studies. We did one recently with North Broadway corridor, we've done several fire stations, had one, so we just kind of set that aside. We have reduced that amount from 250 to 100,000 in the current year, just because we, one, we haven't had as many studies and things that we've been looking at, and two, because we are trying to use as much money as we can to get things done in other places. Buildings and facilities are basically exactly what that says, improvements and to repair existing facilities and try to maintain the quality that we have in those facilities. Park improvement, this is not the $500,000 from fuel tax, this is the money that comes from alcohol tax, and it's set aside every year for them to do projects or to maintain any park or recreation service program or facility. So we kind of budget that number around how much we collect each year. Streets has multiple sources of revenue for their system, construction, maintenance, reconstruction. Their, their funding comes from gas tax, sales tax, and we also typically every year have a tax in federal fund exchange funding. System enhancement of utilities, water, wastewater fund. Martha, you could try to do about $2 million a year in projects, if you can get them done, just to keep up that system and maintain that, that system. And then vehicles and equipment, this is the top one, this and those facilities are probably the toughest for us to budget, because there's so much need, and there's not a lot of dollars allocated to this. So vehicles and equipment is replacement of vehicles and equipment. The funding source for most of the city is sales tax. Each of the enterprise funds, funds their own replacements, so you'll see several different sections on that table for the funding from those other funds. So the next slide kind of just gives us a budget overview of that, and as you can see, for vehicles and equipment, that's $200,000. That's the ambulance that the fire department purchases each year, and it's reimbursed by the city or by the county. Then sales tax has a $5 million that we use for CIP, for different reasons. Just before I show the parks, that's $500,000 for park improvements and the $3.2 million for street. Special parks were budgeted $251,000, we'll get to that in detail here in a bit. But this just kind of breaks it out by fund and by use, and you just have a summary and overview of where, where money's coming from and what it's being used for. So now we'll kind of get into the detail, so as you, as you go through these, if you have questions, comments, there's a certain length of time for you to have that discussion, is that a priority, you know, do we need to look at something different, those types of things. So the first category is CIP planning, like I mentioned earlier, we do have, on the next slide, Jacob, we do have $100,000 budgeted for that, we have, we do not have anything at this point dedicated for that. Usually what we do with this is as something comes up, if something comes up throughout the year, it becomes a priority, we have this set aside for that process. The next slide is buildings and facilities, and this is one that I mentioned earlier, that it, we always have a higher demand than we typically have a funding availability. So on this one, we work a lot with buildings and facilities and sorry, Von Heart, to look at the request, make sure that he's looked over them, to make sure that he agrees with like the priority and, and kind of the needs going on here. And so he's really helpful in helping us do this. So as we look at these, into these items, I don't, if you have questions about any of them specifically, I have the detailed request with me, I could answer that. But like I said, this is not anything different than we saw this summer in the budget process. So any questions or comments on any of these?
But this is Mike, and just to reiterate, reiterate Debbie's point about the building and facilities deferred maintenance. If you look at that category, there's seven items on there, and six of those are $50,000 or less, the vast bulk of those are $25,000 or less. So we have a long history of that being a challenge for us, and that, that's a priority for me and staff going forward to try to inventory our system and, and better address this deferred maintenance item as well as vehicles and equipment.
The only one I will add to that list is, I did get a call this week about the PD building book, and they, that's become a more critical item, so I think that one will probably rise to the top, so you'll see that probably come very early in the year to get that done as soon as weather allows, if that, that's become more critical at this point. So then on the next page, I brought in also, I hadn't done this in the beginning, but on the next slide, we talked about the special parks and that funding, so I brought in the information about that fund. The fund had a balance at the end of 2019 of $348,000. We had historically budgeted expenditures of $194,000, because that's kind of, kind of an average of what we collect. However, we have not spent very little of that money this year due to COVID, so I expect that we'll have a significant amount left over. I would anticipate that that fund balance goes up probably another $100,000 by the end of 2020. So what we, what we kind of recommended, because the need for vehicles and equipment on the next slide is so great, especially in the parks department, what we recommend, what we were recommending back in the budget process is that we use these funds to kind of buy some of these larger lawn mower items that the parks department has historically. I'll tell you, because they're the parks department, they're not a public safety, it's easy to make these non, a prior, not a priority, but they do, it becomes to the point where they can't mow, or they can't get their work done, because the equipment is not in working work. So what we're trying to do is take advantage of some, the fund balance to at least get them to a point where they have some of, some of their equipment's a little bit newer. Jacob, Mike, hop in here, because I know he's been working with them to see, to really work on is this the equipment you need for the duty that you're doing, kind of doing a really good overview of what, what their need is, do you need this type of equipment? And trying to make sure that we're matching what we're buying with what we need to do with it.
And this, again, I guess I would add that, you know, these are some initial purchases that are identified. Another part of that conversation that we're having is a full inventory of their fleet, and whether we need to finance it, you know, being mindful of the useful life of the equipment, whether we need to entertain long-term financing to really overturn the fleet. As I mentioned when we were in budget discussions, the vast majority of their equipment is 20 years old.
This is Rod, I'd like to weigh in here a little bit. And I'm gonna ramble a little bit far afield, but back when we originally passed the sales taxes, vehicles and equipment were, was, were set at, in other words, we didn't shift everything, all the general fund vehicles and equipment to sales tax. We initially had a criteria, and basically what it amounted to was if something was larger than we could normally afford out of our general fund budget, but wasn't large enough to qualify for bond financing, then it came out of the sales tax. And what that worked out to was a threshold of about $80,000 to $200,000. So we would replace things like street sweepers, larger trucks and so on, out of the sales tax. Everything else, all the operational stuff still came out of the general fund, including park stuff. And then as we went on down the road and we, it was clear that, you know, sales tax and property tax combined weren't keeping up with things, we gradually shifted things from being paid out of the general fund into the sales tax fund. And then about 2016 or thereabouts, and I think it happened in conjunction with the newest sales tax renewal, all of a sudden, the general fund is paying al- almost nothing for vehicles and equipment, and all of our routine purchases are made out of the sales tax fund. With respect to parks equipment, what happened is in the sales tax. With respect to parks equipment, what happened is in the sales tax fund, they tended to fall to the bottom of the priority list. You know, you got a police car or mower, which one are you gonna buy? Uh, and still now we're we're shifting stuff from the. Sales tax fund into the special parks fund, which used to play for things like playground facilities. And um other neighborhood kinds of facilities. Um, matter of fact, um. Bill Burke Park, a lot of those facilities were built using this fund along with some state funds over a period of probably fifteen years. Um, we just kind of kept nibbling away at it. And I'm saying all this because I I think we need to be aware that we're changing priorities in the way we use our money. And it does have an effect on services that we can provide. Uh, and I'm I'm inclined to to. Want to try to move some of our routine capital stuff, routine vehicle stuff. Back into the general fund and bite the bullet and do what it takes uh in order to make that happen. Uh, you know, police cars shouldn't come out of a special fund, in my opinion. I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with doing it. It's authorized in that fund. But I, you know, it, there's gonna come a time when uh that sales tax could go away, and then we're gonna be faced. Well, whoever our successors are, are gonna be faced with a pretty tough decision. Um. You know, and that's probably true of whatever we spend the money on. But I I just, it just, it it is something that's. Uh. Troubles me every time I see this long list in the sales tax fund of vehicles. And it's just, I have this nagging sense that, you know, it shouldn't be that way. Some of those ought to be coming out of our. You know, our regular operational type budgets. Anyway, rant over.
This is Mike again. I I do, I agree with what you're saying, and um. Part of the conversation we've had, staff's had with you as the governing body, and we've had a lot more conversation behind the scenes as staff, is. Doing a better job of inventorying our vehicles and equipment and and scheduling it so that we can speak to the question of if we, if we're gonna get this managed and. Finance, what is the annual uh allocation that we need to target? And and if we can get it in the general fund, all the better. Um, so in parks, it's kind of risen to the top just because of the age of their equipment. But the rest of the conversation we're having as a staff is inventorying our entire fleet. Um, both just in terms of uh what we have, as well as the useful life and the necessity of it, and all with the intention of coming back and saying. If we could amortize this and we could and not have to have this ongoing annual conversation about the. The equipment that's most in disrepair, but have a have a plan. What funding level would that take? And then we can start to talk about where we're comfortable funding it from and and make a better informed decision in my estimation.
At what point do we anticipate having that inventory and status update complete so that we can begin to have those conversations?
Uh, there's been quite a bit of work done on the part of staff. My goal is uh going into the budget conversation in twenty twenty one. For twenty twenty two. That doesn't mean that the funding's there, but we will at least be able to have a informed conversation with you about. What we think our fleet looks like, um, and what our needs are, and what what a schedule might look like, and then reducing that to an annual cost.
And so back to Commissioner Francis' um observation. Does this represent, using the special parks funding for for our vehicles, does this represent a one-time? Um. Uh. Expense out of this fund, or is this a philosophical ongoing from here on out, or looking at 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 doing this more long-term?
Well, the the items on the screen represent a one-time expense. The.
Right, and I just meant in in the use of that revenue source.
Some of the conversation we had uh when we were going through the budget process was allocating as much as fifty percent of this fund. For vehicles and equipment so that we could make a wholesale replacement of of our fleet that is. Uh, frankly, beyond its useful life. I think we pressed our luck quite a bit. So our thinking, i- if we can get a a fuller picture of the vehicles and equipment inventory, and we identify an alternate source, we can certainly transition to that and. And, you know, rededicate ourselves to special parks, but our conversation so far has been. Uh, kind of splitting this in half so that we can start to address the parks vehicle and equipment issues.
If I might might weigh in, you know, if you really think about this. We last year uh decided to invest five hundred thousand dollars a year in park improvements out of the sales tax fund. So we we do that, and I believe that's the number that's listed. But then what we do is we take vehicles and equipment out of the sales tax fund and put it in the special parks fund, which we used to use to fund park improvements. So the net increase in park improvements is really only about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, it's it's kind of a, uh. This is not a good way to say it, but it's kind of a shell game, and and, you know, we didn't end up doing what we thought we did. Um, so I, you know, I I have, uh, I understand why we're doing it, and I understand the pressures that move us that way. Two hundred and fifty one thousand dollars would be something like a half a mil. If we were to fund it out of the general fund. So I, and I don't know that that's the priority. I'm just, I'm, you know, I think these are things we need to be aware of when we. Start telling the public, but we we're, we've committed five hundred thousand dollars a year to park improvements. Well, not so much really. We committed two hundred and fifty thousand to park improvements and two hundred and fifty thousand to replacing vehicles and equipment. That we've not replaced for ten years. Was it ten years, Mike, or twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty. You know, so I I I just think we need to have our eyes open going forward into this and 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 understand. That, you know, we're setting priorities sometimes, I think, without necessarily. Uh, being aware of what the implications are.
Yeah, and and I understand your point. We might need to go back in history and look at what we actually spent out of the special parks fund. Um, because I I don't know that, you know, it has done special projects and done things like that, but I. Couldn't couldn't entirely tell you what our history is. I mean, if you look at twenty nineteen, our actuals were thirty five hundred dollars in expenditures. I'm looking at that right?
It it's varied a lot from year to year. Uh, you know, some years the balances build up, and then we we do something special on. Um, so it's always been.
In a few years that I've been here, we have actually replaced park equipment out of that fund. Um. Think it runs about ninety thousand dollars to do one park depending on size. Um, and in the, from twenty seventeen till twenty nineteen, or till twenty twenty, we had actually budgeted a year to do park replacements. Um, so like Mark, Mike was talking, um, what we talked about early on is if we come up with some financing. Uh, scheme or financing program to start financing some of this equipment. If we set aside ninety thousand dollars for park replacements, park park replacement, we'd still be kind of doing that. And then taking the other ninety thousand dollars or so and coming up with some financial plan to. Start replacing some of this equipment on a more routine basis.
Uh, and in terms of, you know, parks in and of themselves, while improvements are, you know, the priority and and they're the most noticeable. If we're on the verge of our equipment failing to the point that we can't maintain them at their current levels, that's not gonna go unnoticed either. We. We are just at the bleeding edge of of the life of that equipment because of how we've done this for so long.
I, you know, I don't disagree with that. I, my, and I, my concern is with the way we're proposing to fund it. Uh, and I just think it's okay. There's nothing wrong with it. I just think we need to be aware that we're we're changing uh what we said we're gonna commit resources to.
Yeah, and I, and I'm committed to, by, as we prepare the twenty twenty two budget, if there's receptivity to. A mill, applying a mill rate to it, we can certainly quantify that in terms of the annual cost and what that looks like in a mill rate. In all honesty, I I feel an obligation to come to you with a bigger picture than just. Uh, the most pressing equipment needs in one department. Um, when we talk about a mill rate, we need to have a broader plan so that you, as a governing body, have a sense of what the short and long-term ramifications are of that. So my hope is to bring you a more fleshed-out vehicle and equipment. Plan so that you, we can take this conversation to the next step.
Well, I think if we're talking about. Budgeting and mill rates has to go much wider than vehicles and equipment. We've got lots of. Needs and programs and so on that we we talk about wanting to do, but we never seem to find the money to do them. And if we're gonna do that, we need to have that conversation and make the decision to go.
And and frankly, we also need to be. Um, keep in mind that our parks have really suffered, and not just when we had to go to the shared work program this summer, but. Um, our parks do need some significant maintenance and investment in them, so. Um, I know it's a juggling act, and it's about priorities and 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 funding those priorities, but. That, you know, that's that's my concern about. Um, seeing any money that could potentially help out our parks uh conditions um get get reallocated long-term.
Well, and as we go about uh even a longer-term uh study of, you know, what our needs are. Um, one of the things like we need to take into consideration is we're probably gonna continue to put a a lot of emphasis on property tax because with the new jail. But uh, being passed, that takes a half-cent sales tax. Um, adds to the sales tax to the county, and I think that's really hampers us to be able to increase sales tax in the future.
Yeah.
Just wanna throw this out there. I've thrown it out before, but when we look at the water. Storage that's contemplated at ninety thousand dollars a year coming out of the uh parks and rec, doesn't that seem like a system improvement to you that the? The water department should support, and wouldn't that create ninety thousand dollars uh to be used for uh other things, parks improvements, equipment, uh building needs?
And I'm not sure if that's a question for the governing body or for me. The. We've we've funded water storage for other, you know, the uh, oh, the um. I'm drawing a blank on the program, but the uh water storage program with the state of of Kansas through the utility fund. This particular one is the recreational water right associated with the river project, so it's a little bit different. In that it's not necessarily water for consumption. Um, but that's a conversation we could have.
Isn't it backup and overflow, though, in the case of if we need extra? Water stored in a dry summer, or, you know, any of those things that might be impacted by weather or rain or lack of rain?
Yeah, I I think the state's kind of segregated the programs and and would not allow us to use the water storage, uh, water that we'd already purchased, and the water assurance water. We had to. Buy this as a recreational right to be able to divert um for aesthetic reasons through the the downtown improvement. But I'd I'd, I can double-check on whether that's available for consumption in any way.
And we will talk about that here when we, when we get to the C I, the actual C I P portion. Um, that will be in there, and we can have that discussed a little bit further. Um, as we go through um the actual capital improvement, the five-year capital improvement program.
Hey Debbie, it's, I know, I'm just watching our time. If we, if we get, if we're starting to get bogged down, you might. Help us move along, so we wanna make sure we get through everything, so.
Yeah, I'm watching. Okay, so the next um slide uh kind of as an overview of streets. And I will say that this. This allocation, basically, we we know kind of, we estimate on what the money is that we're gonna come in, especially for gas tax. We allocate three point two million dollars in from sales tax and our our federal fund exchange dollars. And what um Public Works does is they out, they kind of split that out based on what their knowledge is of those projects and their needs. But I will say that this is one of those uh sections of the sub C I P that usually come before you offer. And you'll often see that they took money from one of these sections to go to another one because they found that one was um. At the prior, either the priority change or the cost of going inlay went up or something like that. Um, so the reason I bring that up is because I know that sidewalks have become um a hot topic right now, so. As we see the number in here for sidewalks is fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't mean that if something happens and we decide that that priority changes. That we couldn't take those funds and kind of reallocate from one of these other projects and that. Um, but basically, this this is a standard list of items that Public Works does on an annual basis. And then it's just broken out by the amount that they kind of allocate to each of those um projects, basically. There's nothing to here.
Well, I would also mention that we applied for K dot grant funding and E D A funding for. Uh, specific road improvements associated with the Schwanz project. So as those grants and the the details of that come to light, that we may need to factor that into these line items as well. Um, with respect to sidewalks, the sidewalk ramp program's been something we've done annually for quite some time. In the last. Two weeks or so, there's been conversation about, you know, the lack of connectivity in general and and just our. Decades history of of sidewalks not being required in certain developments. If we're gonna try to address that, that I've I've already asked staff to start inventorying our sidewalk shortfalls. Um, we're probably talking about an approach very similar to what the engineering staff recently presented to you in terms of. Inventorying our streets and and categorizing them in in terms of priority. We may have to do the same thing for sidewalks. And then talk about an additional annual allocation if we want to tackle that.
And the next slide is um utility system enhancement. Um, these are the projects that uh Martha has uh designated as projects that she hopes to get done in twenty twenty one. Um, I just kind of gave an explanation on the risk assessment one because I just felt like it wasn't very self-explanatory. Uh, but any of these other ones are are the projects that she's got set up for her system enhancements for twenty twenty one. The next slide we get to is vehicles and equipment, and this is what I mentioned earlier, that we always have a lot greater requests than we have um funding available. Uh, we do have a little over nine hundred thousand dollars uh in approved requests on this list. We have nine hundred thirty dollars, thousand dollars budgeted out of bill tax fund. Um. There's nothing that has changed since the last time we looked at this. Uh, the ambulance, as noted on here, does come from the general fund, but that is reimbursed by the county. Um, I spoke to Keith today. He felt like that two hundred thousand dollars was still a good number. Probably a little high now because we were able to get the uh power costs using shared funding. Um, so with a remount, we're hoping that that number comes in a little bit lower than that, but that should be fully reimbursed by the county. Um, the next uh slide are vehicles and equipment that are purchased from other funds. Uh, the sanitation fund, the solid waste fund, the utility fund. Um, there again, there's nothing that has changed on these from what we what we presented earlier in the year. Uh, the GPS base station may come off here for twenty twenty one because we actually ended up having to purchase that. In twenty twenty, as you recall, it came before you several weeks ago, a couple months ago. Um, and I did verify with them today that that was this. Item, so I believe that item will come off of the the solid waste budget uh fund for twenty twenty one. Uh, so that's the end of our sub C I P. Are there any other comments or questions about that, or we'll move on to the five-year capital improvement program? Um, and this is where we'll talk about those bigger bigger projects, um, whether we agree or disagree with moving forward with those at this time. Uh, if the funding that we've provided or recommended is where you believe it should come from. Um, just to give us some direction on on how we wanna move forward in twenty twenty one. Um, we'll bring anything beyond twenty twenty one will be brought back to you in next year. Um, so really what what we're concentrating on is the twenty twenty one project. And one, whether we still wanna do them, whether we wanna finance in this way, um. Those sort of types of questions. So as you can see, several of these projects were were uh brought over from twenty twenty. Because as you recall, when we got hit with COVID in March and April, uh, we canceled most of our projects. We said we were gonna delay most of those projects. Um, you do see the high-speed sale of that manual allocation, the park capital improvement, the five hundred thousand dollars. That's still in here, that will be for that maintenance, that um comprehensive plan. We would anticipate that we would look at that comprehensive plan and look at the highest priorities that we you have instructed in the past. The streets improvement was our prior scheme to kind of allocate those numbers. This is where your purchase of that water comes in at nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um. From what I've talked with Martha, that number, it could happen in twenty twenty one, depending on the construction, the actual construction. Um, it could happen in twenty twenty two, but we wanna make sure we're prepared if it does, if it is going to go forward in twenty twenty one. Um, the first phase of the Smoky Hill River renewal at seven million dollars. Um, as we talked about earlier. Um, as we talked about earlier, uh depending on where the core comes with their scheduling, um we probably will get into some construction in twenty twenty one. Um, however, we'll probably end up noting that until we get that, at least that first section done. Um, first thing that has to happen is we have to, from what I talked to Martha, is we have to decide what that is, um kind of what that phase is. Uh, the other one that's still on here is North Nine Street Bridge Construction, one point nine five million dollars. Um, as we saw in the street um allocation, they are intending to use some federal fund exchange dollars for this, so this number will go down if they do that. Um, that was about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That should reduce that debt financing to that secure project. T P E C floors are back on here because we we did post home notes from twenty twenty. Um, we did go, we have the option to go from T P E C fund balance or deal bonds, but at this point, which is the reduction of of funding from transient guest tax. I'm not sure that the balance will be there um to pay for this kind of fund balance. It's just something we're gonna have to watch and see as we go along. Um, the other request from them, I took off an emergency radio project from this list that was on here originally because we didn't know we've already gone forward with that. Um, in twenty twenty, we've already bonded part of that. Um, a new one on here is T P E C H C A C. Um, there again, T P E C, I don't believe we'll have fund balance to pay for that. That would end up being our bond. Uh, the annual water line improvements, they were four million dollars being funded by debt, uh taking a loan. Um, this was the first year twenty twenty one that we would pay for our, we'll pay for two million dollars of improvements out of cash. Um, and the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant is on here for the twenty eight million dollars. You know, we've already kind of started the process, but um we'll really get into that loan in in twenty twenty. Any questions or comments about the twenty twenty one project? Now, I will say all of these projects, with the exception of like high bike trail and things like that, will will come back to you again. Um, as we bid project or and that, those will all come back to you again. So twenty twenty two, as with our normal uh five year pervert plan, we typically have a lot of specific projects on the first year or two, and then it's just kind of standard projects over the last two or three years. Um, that's something that I'd like to see us get a little bit better at is planning that whole five year plan. Um, the the second year, the re- renewal construction is on twenty twenty two. Um, the high bike trails, those typical annual allocations are on here. I did take off the third, what would have been the three, third of three year construction for river renewal. Um, only because we did not include that in the funding of the sales tax because when we looked at those numbers, it wasn't going to support it. Um, so we we did remove that from the uh C I Ps. Uh, the next twenty twenty fours, again, the three seat of the other, the the standard high bike trail. Um, parks improvement, the twenty twenty five are the same, so we really don't have anything on. Uh, any comments or questions about C I P? What we should do with any of the projects? Do we move forward?
Any comments, anyone?
Th- this is Mike again, and and I'm repeating myself from a while back, but I think you recall that in my mantra a while ago was uh back to basics a bit in terms of as we talk about strategic planning and and carrying that process forward with the city commission, my goal is to give you a better understanding of these type of issues, funding sources and and needs that we've been deferring and may not have been discussing as much as we should have. And it's awful easy to get uh focused on new improvements and and for lack of a better description, bells and whistles when we've got a lot of uh core issues that have been an ongoing challenge. I mean, vehicles and equipment is a prime at discussion. The next point of discussion is probably buildings and facilities. I think you'll find it daunting just to know how many H V A rooftop H V A C units we have alone in our system. Um, I feel like it's staff's duty to to give you a better understanding of that so that you can make a fully informed decision as we start making funding decisions, whether it's C I P, mill rate, general fund, sales tax. Um, there's a lot of moving parts for an organization this size, and we'll try to give you as a understandable and and manageable overview as we can.
Mike, what is there? You know, having toured the uh fire station number four, uh it looks like well, the the building really can't be enlarged and improved, so, you know, moving it is the only practical option. Uh, how, so this is not even coming up with a tentative date according to this plan right now. Uh, I know it's a hefty price tag, but uh that's a lot of years to uh put up with a very inadequate building, and I don't know where I would suggest trying to sneak it in. Uh, but I mean, i- is it is it impractical to think that that fire station could just keep going on at that location for the next ten years?
Oh, and I don't wanna assert that that's our our plan for that. And in fairness to the fire department, then more than once they've asked what's it mean to be on the C I P if we're just on the C I P year after year and things leapfrog over that project? And that kind of goes to the 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 point I've been making before. Until we get a good full understanding of of our needs, it's awful easy for, you know, pick whatever project you want to take on priority over things that just kind of continue to be a deferred maintenance item like that. So um I think I think that's on the list. I think we have other priorities that have yet to even get entered into the conversation that all have to somehow get balanced and get scheduled. Um, but no, I don't I don't see us saying that we're gonna bide our time for that long with fire station number four. What we have to do is fit it in among the priorities and the finances and see what the that, how we can make all that happen.
Because, you know, it it's gonna always be the the big one on the list. And I know we'll we'll look at that five million dollars and say, well, gosh, we could do these other fifteen projects at three hundred thousand each. Uh, and it'll keep getting pushed back. Uh, but I guess if we prioritize needs, I guess wherever it falls on the needs list, I like to see it get pushed through on on the funding, assuming money is there.
Yep, that in fairness, I don't disagree at all. In fact, I think we need a better inventory of needs so that we can have an informed conversation and then start setting those priorities and then start identifying our financing to go with that.
Yeah, I agree because until we have kind of a glow, a more global view of the shortcomings in all of our other facilities. Um, I mean, I I keep seeing a lot of H V A C uh systems, like you mentioned, that are needed but unfunded. Um, and it's been, gosh, it's probably been two years since I took a a a look at that, um, you know, that fire station needs assessment study, but it does occur to me that um obviously, the current situation is 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 not good at all. It's terrible. But maybe kind of like the way that the car museum did, maybe it's time for us to take another look at that study and see if there's any way that we can accomplish our goals. Um, somehow, not necessarily remaining in the same footprint, but in the same location and some expansion to the um um uh to that land that's to the south of the present station.
Yeah, and not to complicate the conversation further, but, you know, staffing of a of a medic unit and the stationing them at station four combined with uh transfer issues, and we're trying to staff through those, and it's there's a lot of interrelated uh staffing questions that go along with not just station four, but our staffing overall. We're trying to sort through those as well, but um, you know, we it, w- we can't know it all and and we don't wanna have paralysis by analysis, but we do need to be thoughtful about what we're trying to accomplish here, and I'm trying to facilitate that.
I guess we should at least keep our own facilities up to the level that we expect the county to keep the expo center up to uh up to snuff. Uh, particularly as far as, well, I mean, the H V A saying, things that if you don't fix are gonna cost a whole lot more down the road after the catastrophe, be it a roof falling in or basement wall collapsing or whatever.
Yeah, I think project by project, we probably do a good job as an organization doing it right when we do it. And I've used this analogy before, but I I do feel like it's a little bit of whack a mole where whatever pops up, we address, but something's always popping up. Um, until we can get a more uh big picture view, it's it's just reactionary.
And one last question. If uh we spend uh more money on the baseball facilities, uh let alone a tennis facility, uh is that gonna come out of some of this money that's not allocated from twenty two?
Yeah, with respect to baseball, you know, the conversation previously was transient guest tax and
Right.
Um, yeah, that COVID kind of put that on hold, but transient guest tax does have a dedicated purpose that is more in keeping with something like that. So I think uh we probably need to take the conversation back to the transient guest tax and while we, you know, may have taken a hit and we may not know what it'll generate or not have as much confidence in our projections, it it's still a possible possible revenue source. With respect to tennis, we're gonna get into that in in a couple of weeks in terms of a study session, but again, that's that's an example of deferred maintenance where our existing tennis courts are in need of significant upgrade. So I think there might be an opportunity to take what we in intended to invest in terms of repairs to the existing tennis courts and and team up with uh the local group that's trying to do a tennis project and actually move the ball forward for us in terms of um spending maybe the same amount of money but having more to show for it. Um, but tennis courts are another prime example of of long term deferred maintenance that's uh come home to roost.
And and it's just, it it kind of bothers me that and I know that there's different funding sources, et cetera, et cetera, so bear with me, but it does bother me when we're talking about a significant investment in a tennis facility and yet we have a fire station that's um that's in need. It's kind of like when we were, after we toured the um uh police training center and 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 shooting range, the original one. It's just always kind of at the back of your mind every time you're you're getting ready to um allocate money for a new project that quite frankly is a lot more exciting and a lot more fun than uh fire station infrastructure, but at the same time, um you know, it's 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 a difficult balance and when we take one of these big looks at at all the outstanding um uh capital improvement needs, it's to me, it 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 gets a little bit more difficult to get excited about um tennis courts and um baseball diamonds when I see what we're just making do with on a whole variety of of different fronts.
And and I don't wanna get ahead of that conversation too much.
Right, and I did, yeah.
But I am hopeful that what we're gonna bring forward to you is kind of keeping things compartmentalized to where the city, what's the ask of the city is along the lines of what we thought our responsibilities were in the first place, uh as as part of the park master plan. So rather than have it kind of build momentum and and redirect our our energies to things we might not have otherwise planned to spend on. I think we may have struck a good balance, but that's all to be played out in that study session conversation.
And I, one of my comments is, you know, I I still am a firm believer that transient guest tax is how we should look at funding our portion of whether it's baseball, softball, tennis, some of that if we have additional. And so maybe when the tennis comes before us, that gives us an opportunity to to discuss the transient guest tax and see if there's an appetite to to move forward with that. I know it's kind of a a awkward time now that, you know, the uh uh the stays are are down considerably, but I think it's something we oughta, we oughta talk about.
You know, if I could wax eloquent for just a second about matters philosophical is, you know, one of the difficulties we deal with uh in this business is that it's just not one business. It's twenty or twenty five businesses. And setting priorities, deciding what's important becomes very difficult if you have to decide between a fire station and I don't know, baseball fields, for example, or or streets or whatever. You know, I I might play, you know, ten thousand games of tennis before I ever need a single fire truck. Uh, so what what's the relative value of that? And for the people who are enthused about tennis or enthused about baseball or people that bumps in the streets all the time. Um, you know, the people who are, you know, you know, in a wheelchair or a scooter and can't get down the sidewalk to what they need. You know, it becomes very difficult to weigh those things. And actually having a funding source like the transient guest tax helps us a little bit because it focuses that priority setting on one particular set of things. Now we can decide do we want tennis courts, do we want baseball fields? Uh, if they both came to us at the same time, of course, if one of them comes to us for first, they tend to get, they tend to get the resources. So it it it's a, it's it's a tough thing to try to sort out.
Good, good point. Okay, any other questions or comments for Debbie? It's about, I guess we still have a little bit of time.
Can she solve all of these problems for us?
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Money, money will solve a lot of it, so.
I think your description of it not being one business, but twenty or twenty five is a good one.
Yeah, that was really.
And, you know, not, it, everything from funds to funding sources to challenges, staffing priorities. Um, and as much as I I wanna give you the big picture, it that's not entirely possible. We're we're doing our best to gather more information and help you process it.
Well, and it's not only twenty some businesses, but um we have forty seven thousand bosses and all those forty seven thousand may have all different priorities. So obviously it that weighs into it also, so. Okay, um, if we're going to, in the study session, do we wanna everyone just leave their computers on? What do we do here? I'm gonna look at Jacob for some input.
Jacob, looks like you're muted. There you go.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna leave the meeting open. If you wanna mute yourselves or if you wanna mute everybody and you can turn your cameras off or whatever, um, and for the next components.
Actually, we we haven't really talked about this, but how hard is it to to close a meeting and restart it? Because if we have some side conversation going on, that that's a potentially a public meeting. Um, it might be cleaner to end this session and reconvene about ten till four.
Uh, I certainly can do that, but you know, anytime you turn something off. You're not turned back on. But I can, you know, I can mute everybody so that you can't have a conversation.
Let's do that.
So should we, now, if, when you mute it, if we turn our cameras off, do we have the ability to turn those back on without your permission? Or do you have to?
You do. Yeah, I have no control over cameras, just the, just the mute button. I can mute everybody and then there there's no risk of having conversation.
So ideally, we should mute her, you'll mute us, and then we turn our cameras off until, till uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the conversations are muted and my concerns addressed, and I think we're good.
Long as I'm holding up signs, see.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'm muting you.
Yeah, we'll see everybody back here a little before four.